All right.
My life.
Good evening. This meeting of the Southwest Licking Local Board of Education will be in order. It is February 18th. The time is 7:05 and we are, I'm excited and honored to say, in our new Watkins Intermediate School. So, welcome, visitors. Some of you, this may be your first time here, and I'm glad you're able to see it. If you're at home, hopefully you'll get to see it sometime soon, but we're glad you're watching from home as well. So, with that said, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have to say it on our own.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Snigl. Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mr. Vinton.
Here. A quorum is present. We shall continue. Public participation. Does anybody submitted anything?
No.
Prior to meeting? Nope? Okay. Then, we're down to adoption of the agenda. Okay.
For two things, I would like to see if it would be okay if we added the, if we moved the non-agenda speakers up, and if we did have a discussion, a board discussion after these.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Where are you going to move them?
Let's go.
Wherever Mr. Vinton finds that acceptable.
Why are we, sorry, my computer is not moving. Here we go. All right. We will.
Put it under number three?
That's fine. We will put that under three so it will become Agenda Item Four, and then the numbers will just progress accordingly. All right.
Ms. Snigl.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vinton.
Yes. That passes. We will move on to Agenda Item Two. We have a bullying and seclusion presentation.
So, on your guys, and just so you know, I think because the room is large, and actually, try to speak a little bit louder, I think they're having a hard time hearing us out. So, in, on your, in front of you, you have our annual bullying and seclusion report. So, if you guys want to take a look at that, if you have any questions, Dan and or Tanya, depending on what they are, will be happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Okay.
I think the last time we saw this, I think someone, maybe me, suggested that we have, like, a progression, maybe with the last numbers.
Okay.
Or at least, I don't care if we have it tonight, if we could get that, to just see...
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Trend data?
Yes, trending. It's fine if I see it in an email, I don't have to have it.
Yeah, that's no problem at all. I do think you're going to see, for, yeah, multiple reasons lower numbers this year. But, yes, we can give you that. Thank you.
All right. And next, we have a presentation for student of the quarter.
So, we actually don't have that because we don't have sound or the ability. We would be behind us, so we'll have to share that.
All right. So, we anxiously look forward to seeing that next month.
We apologize for that.
Understandable. Thank you very much. All right. We are now moving on to Agenda, Agenda Item Three, Request to Speak on Agenda Items, Teamsters 413. Oh, oops, sorry. I thought we moved it.
He moved on to four.
Request to speak. I thought her session was four.
Oh.
Request to speak.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it. We're good.
Refresh it. Refresh it. It should be changed. I'm changing it generally.
That's probably why. Ah, here we go. Thank you. It didn't refresh. All right. So, we have now a request to speak on an agenda item rather than a non-agenda item because it is now an agenda item. So, we have Jennifer Hickman. If you'd like to come up to the podium, please state your name, your address, and you will have five minutes to, you'll have five minutes to give your, your presentation, your discussion, whatever. Mr. Jones, when there's a minute left, he'll kind of motion you so that you know. Oftentimes, the board just kind of listens and doesn't respond to this, so don't just understand that's kind of how it is, but there will be a discussion, obviously, after this.
I'm here for the need to follow petitioning to be to earlier to speak, asking you to fulfill your responsibility to vote in the best interest of the children who are sequestered. In December, you set the option of building a new catastrophe or renovating the current building. Your discussion included statements of like, "We can't do everything we need to do this long because of school." Eventually, we're not likely to be able to work with Tesla, possibly. We have a perfect plan to maintain Tesla and the building. But you've got to not partake in any decision to change that. I have a focus on right, our parents, our community, saying things like, "I assume there were a lot of questions." You know, the whole new ground needs to be allowed. I never even knew you could test a little promise. I would vote against the new way. This is the prompt we, prompt we used to start the petition that has been voted this week. I wanted to hear your votes, voting for us in 2017, even if the plans to turn Tesla. And you feel a change in that for the community. It is the state that circumstances have a change to Tesla. The month we have been, having in fact, have become obvious, and we will have designated to the earlier, which is not going to happen. And there, and while there are no additional structural or mechanic needs like this, construction can be prepared. In 2018, a field bell in Spencer's classroom, and she had inspected the rest of the building and started to secure the building. But a few months later, more than we can build upstairs. My point is saying that we have a challenge to change, and the whole building won't. Made it susceptible to extend of the catastrophe like a plus 3.5 million more than it is the biggest challenge in the last foundation in finding a difference. You stated that we're not going to be able to complete the needed renovation of the Tesla of the $11 million budget, and does that the need to ask for more than before this renovation was really needed? If you need this in tax fare dollars into a building where you're simply trying to maintain the ancient function without paying educational programs, does it make sense to renew this? And very good job. How much more money do we have to pay to renovate a building with the state of this city? We are the best community in the neighborhood of the town, but what are we actually doing to fix that? A working elevator in a building, reinforced walls, concealed roofs. What we won't get is better technology so every classroom has strong enough wifi to take their math tests on a public book in their own classroom. We won't get bigger classroom sizes so the 23 students aren't crammed into every last space in the second floor and third floor classrooms across the specials. We won't get a gym where the music teacher can organize performances for parents and where the growing use sports program in this community can have more space for winter workouts, practices, and games rather than paying Chad, Chad Sports thousands of dollars to use their facilities. However, for around $31,000 per student about this building cost, we can get a brand-new building with all these problems solved in addition to accessibility and traffic problems. I'm going to let Nicole speak to accessibility, but I wanted to bring up one point. Currently, students with disabilities that inhibit their mobility, some of them stay at Carpersville in second grade and in third grade are sent forward to Etna because the Tesla is not accessible to them. Is it really okay to pass a student with disabilities to another school while his or her neighbors and potential siblings get to attend a neighborhood school? I'm not okay with that. I encourage you to read all the optional requirements that I sent to you and made up the petition if you haven't had a chance to do that yet. But I might have a quote unquote, "We understand the impacts of history and value of your pride. However, we also understand the need for a building that can support our students as we prepare them for their futures. What your pride we live on in every student as they are given the best learning environment and opportunities during their 13 years at SWF. Our students are most important. We need to do what is best for their academic success and provide them with a building that is up-to-date and designed to meet modern educational needs now and in the future."
Thirty seconds, I'm sorry.
"Teaching today requires technology and reliable access to apps and online programs we're dealing." Let me move on to our district, I acknowledge that. The renovating Tesla will plan 2018 and 2016 with a bond initiative being. We did not change the votes to yes votes, so love on should be next. We simply got more hands to hold and got more yeses. Will there be people voting against the next levy? Because they felt like keeping Tesla is more impossible. But I said the same thing happened for voters who feel physically irresponsible to continue to pull money out of a aging Tesla. Hopefully, opening new buildings in 2023 will not be people, we know that they are already going to. We already have more students than the 1,350 capacity in 2023. If we open in 2023, the new building we have will grow up a little. It was stated that bonds and levies are won and lost on trust in the school board. I contend that our district needs to trust to make the right decision for our students. We need to trust you to make the most fiscally sound decision for our students' education for the next 100 years, not just the next 20. And we need to trust you for accessibility, technology, and our students above this grade. I don't think you can ignore that 72% on a survey or the 500 design petition. Please keep in mind that the Ohio State School Boards Association states that a good board member should vote at all times in the best interest of the children of the school district, and is flexible, realizes that our plans will change as necessary. When tradition can't be honored, oppression must be ignored. Please do what is best for our students in building new Tesla Elementary. Give them this."
Thank you. All right. Nicole Gard. You wouldn't mind coming up and just stating your name and your address? And like Mrs. Hickman, you'll have five minutes. Mr. Jones will let you know when you're about a minute down, and we'll go from there.
I do not quite agree with that. This is just Jen. But good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
Hello, fellow community members, neighbors, friends, people that I know, people that all live in this community with me. Thank you for allowing the opportunity to present a different perspective from what was presented in the hall. That is not the only noise we should hear. This is the final moment where our school is getting forward. We are setting a precedent. We are ensuring that we are making the most fiscally responsible decision with the new information presented that was not here in 2015. This is new stuff. Yes, we made great financial decisions in 2015 with board members there. It's 2021. We have more money. We have more students. We have more complex issues going on. After hours of research, I believe building a new school is the right choice, is necessary, and honestly required to legally accept the millions of state tax dollars they receive as a school district. When I originally heard there was a possibility of a new Tesla Elementary, I was ecstatic and thought that would be an easy decision. Yes, all the community behind us, all right, you know, this is wonderful. Now, this is not what happened. Um, I volunteered every Tuesday at 1:00 p.m. between 2017 and 2019 in my Luke's school classroom at Tesla Elementary. So, my second grader was on the first floor. Wow, you know, you just go in the front office, and you say hello to this school, and vice versa, and maybe secretaries, and you go volunteer, and so I would sit right outside his office, or right outside the office, Mrs. Tate's room, and I write papers, and he'll sort them out to me with their math problems and everything. I also saw that being portrayed on Facebook or in our community as the only part of that building. And yes, had my second grader only been in Mrs. Tate's class in the very front of that building, yes, my idea of, wow, this is a great building, we need to keep this, we need to renovate this, that would absolutely have been it. Fast forward, the next year, my son is on the third floor of that building. I saw students get stuck. And the other year, I am the mother of a child who's in a wheelchair. The school district would ask me to trust my kid in a wheelchair who cannot, who cannot into that building with this elevator that does not work. And that is how he is supposed to get to music, to arts. If he had Mrs. Care, that's his master. Absolutely not. It's unacceptable. And I think, you know, when I originally saw all of this come into play, I think, oh my gosh, yes, absolutely, let's, a new school, this is wonderful, all of our students will be included. No. There are still many issues, I think about the rest, that are not fully included in that building. Our renovation does not include students going to physical therapy, inactivity, facial therapy, and an accessible classroom. Why? Our population has grown more than the state projected. That's different than 2015. These people who say, oh, is that a microphone? I don't know. Okay. Sorry. Okay. So, the people who say, no, we voted on this. This was the best decision at the time in 2015. Agreed. I'm sure it was. We have grown leaps and bounds. Every single school has grown more than projected by the state. Now, we are renovating, this is a backwards thing. This is not the Southwest Licking schools that we are built, like, look at this gorgeous building. This is where we are moving forward. Renovating Petascola is moving backwards. It is not moving forwards. It is not inclusive of all of our students. It is not acceptable to receive these state dollars that say all of our kids should be included here. You know, when we, like, there are certain stipulations to those tax dollars. When we say, yes, you know, we're accepting them, we accept these students left and right, it's not okay to not allow them to wheel into their own therapy room. Are kids that need therapy are having to be carried downstairs? Into the therapy room? This is my last, I want to say this. It is not okay for kids who receive therapy to not access the therapy they require. It has been written into IEPs. It has been underhandedly, possibly, done to where we can maybe squon, maybe squander. It's okay for now. It's not okay for every day. We're trying to pump all this, these millions of dollars into this building, but yes, I lived on Vine Street next to the library. I love downtown Petascola, and I know there is a very strong, albeit minority voice, that is coming at all of you board members. I know that. It is strong, and it is coming. And they, and I would also say to that, there are, there is also a majority of parents coming to you pleading to make the fiscal, the responsibly fiscal decision for a new building. And I think our last levy that passed, the boots on the ground that helped that pass are pushing for a new building. We might not be the loudest, we might not have titles, but the boots, the people who did pass, the yes-sayers, we're not going to change nos. We will change yeses. We'll, we'll encourage parents to help us move forward. Moving forward is a new Petascola Elementary, and that rests on your shoulders. And that's inclusive of all students. And we know that as a community. That's up to the school board, and we, you know, voted for you because we trust in you to make the right choice for our kids.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So, we are now moving on to Agenda Item Four, which is now Petascola. Oh, my lord. All right. Request to speak from Teamsters. See none? Request to speak from the Southwest Licking Education Association. None? Okay, now, we will move on to Agenda Item Four, the discussion on Petascola Elementary. Someone like to start the conversation?
I mean, I could start with something.
Sure.
If you like.
I think your, your mass, the thought, are you allowed to put that down?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Yeah, I can pull, can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. So, I don't know if this is a viable option or not, a happy medium, a way to accomplish what it seems that everybody on both sides want. But Rick and I were a part of a conversation with multiple stakeholders as far as the state and Garmin Miller, et cetera, about the building. And one, one thing that we talked about was the possibility of looking at doing maybe the state-required renovations for Petascola, and so using district money to renovate what's needed to bring that building up to code, then using the money funded from the state towards a new elementary with obviously some additional funds that would have to support that. We could then look at using Petascola Elementary, because I think one thing that we've heard from people is important is to have kids in there in some capacity. We could look at using it in multiple ways. We could consider using it for our preschool. That's growing, as you'll see in the numbers I'm going to go over today. We could look at using it for an alternative school, which has been an interest and a passion of mine for years, as well as Mr. Chancheski's when he was the high school principal, now assistant superintendent. So, I think there are ways we could utilize the building. We could renovate and do what we need to make it so it's up to code and, you know, have kids in it, and then still use those funds to build a new building. So, it's just a, a different idea that came about in talking to them, one that we hadn't thought of before, so one that I wanted to share with you, and I don't know if you want to add anything, Rick, or?
Discussion would really be renovated for a smaller number, because right now, it's supposed to be renovated for about 350, 450. So, we, like, when they talk about possible, it's mothballed on the third floor.
What did you say?
Mothballing the third floor, one example.
What does that mean?
Just don't use it off.
Okay.
So, basically, we renovated, just basically, you said, bring up the code for a smaller capacity. So, you know, right now, it's 450, you know, maybe it's 250, and then we decided to use it for those purposes, but we use local dollars to either additional tans or cops or sort of revenue to station as a possible way of funding that. It'd be a small renovation, I would say, no more than four or five man that building, but use 11 million from the high school facilities plus the other 13 made to not giving to build a new building. So, we'd have both buildings, one is to be renovated, lots smaller, so it wouldn't be all additional parking, all the buses, and all the other stuff that's going to cost a lot of money in that building. So, like Dr. Perkins said, it's kind of compromising, though, just brought it today. Had thought about it, Garmin Miller, we called and brought it up. We told them right now the plan is to keep renovating, because we're towards that, so nothing's changed, but this is, and everything else brought in for you to.
Okay. I have a question. I know that you just learned this.
Can you guys hear?
I know that you just learned this new discussion, but has any discussion, any continued discussions a part of that as to where the new, if we were to go with this option, where the school would be located?
Two, two most viable options are, one is the backside part of here. We own all that land, and it can be, we put a new elevator right there. There'll be some cost for renovate, because that probably would come off refugee, but also we probably would have to drive a little more away, too. So, the elevator could be there, that'd be part of a more expensive option. The other option that we discussed in the past is the building's supposed to be demolished, and we put it in one of those places. So, that would be a cheaper option in that bus talk about there, a lot of parking. That's two things we talked about. We already own this land, you know, the dog bounce are talking, it may be quite expensive throughout the mine land.
Because that's what I was, that's what I was curious about. Because, you know, when I'm looking at elementaries, predominantly, all of our schools are in the southern part of our district, and they're either in the southwest or they're in the southeast. And I'm not just saying this because I live in the northeastern part of the district, but, you know, I think if we're looking at other schools, I, if we could find land or if some of these developments out there have land setting aside for us, you know, to me, geographically, it makes sense to have a school in the northeast quadrant somewhere. But that's, you know, that's just me speaking. But, I don't know. I'm excited to hear what you all talked about today.
Before you speak, Roger, am I supposed to pass this around, Jeff? Can no one hear us, or what am I, is this for just me?
It's just for in this room. It's a big, I have a room that's hard to hear.
I'm hearing that sound is a problem.
You were very quiet. I'm often.
All right. Do you want the board, do you want the board to use these, too, then?
Mm-mm.
Are the, is the board supposed to use these as well?
You guys, if you want to, you can talk into these, this will help us go it back into the room, is my thought.
Okay.
I just basically, you were very quiet, so I was just trying to help.
Go ahead. You're Roger. You have a question. Go ahead. My apologies, I just want to make sure.
Not charged.
Well, I'm one of those old timers that you talk about. My parents graduated from that school in 1947 and 48. My kids went there, I went there, of course, so it does have a lot of memories and a lot of, and you have to understand, there's a lot of people like me in this community that have those memories, and that's why they don't want it torn down. I love this idea of being able to use it for something else. I think that'll satisfy all of our needs. My other comment is, I hear a lot about this elevator. Is that just too expensive to replace? I mean, why, why don't we put a new elevator in there?
Well, oh, Mrs., Ms. Gard, I'm sorry. You're, you're fine. You just, we have to go with the formalities here. So, go ahead, Roger.
No, that's, I'm just asking, is the cost just too much to?
If it wasn't built to include in the master plan, identifying something to replace, obviously, it would have to be replaced.
It just takes more money away from other stuff.
If we don't use additional funds, do that, or we do not do something else, it has to be replaced. It's just not.
Well, I understand, but we keep hearing about the elevator. And me, the solution would be if we put a new elevator in, but if it's multi-million, millions of dollars, I, which I don't understand why it would be that expensive, why that wouldn't be an option to help take care of that. I like the idea of closing off the third floor if we don't need it, and if, what you're suggesting, I, I think that's something we need to look into. I think that's a great idea, and it'll, it'll satisfy all of our needs, I believe, so.
Go ahead.
I just, I just, I felt like we needed to bring it back to the table. I, I just felt like that last, in the December meeting, everybody voted and no one felt comfortable. And we walked away, and everybody was walked away, or I personally walked away sick to myself, and I don't know about the rest of the board, but I think we, I think that everyone sort of felt the same way, and I just feel like that we just need to slow down. I understand that there is a timeline, but I think that we just need to just, let's slow down. We're not under guns. I understand we're under a little bit of a timeline, but just take breath and let's say, what is the right thing to do long-term? I, I agree, and, and I, you know, I, going home and talking to everyone with kids and everything, I, I try to make them understand, you know, this is what you've got to do to contribute to your, to your community, and there's times where you get things wrong. And personally, I got it wrong in December. I should not have ordered, no. I, I got it wrong, and you have to admit that. And then you've got to come back together and figure out what to do and how to fix it. I think that's where we are now. I think.
Yeah, I think it's good, you know, we're having this conversation. That was probably, you know, just speaking honestly, that was the hardest vote I've ever had to take.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I'm happy to see that it, you know, I'm, I'm happy to see that, you know, we have this conversation going, because it sounds to me like what you just said is like hitting really two birds, one stone. Kids still will be educated up on the hill. The architecture of the building will be maintained. It may service fewer kids, but the big... It may service fewer kids, but the biggest thing was, the biggest thing I heard from the side that wanted to keep it was they wanted the architecture to remain intact. And it sounds to me like that is what's being proposed here. Now, my question, if we were to do the bare bones renovation, just go through with what we need to make it up to code, would, and we thought about putting a preschool there, would that preschool be handicap accessible?
Can I have that, Roger?
You sure can.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern, because obviously accessibility is important for our, our special needs, development, disabled part of our preschool, so.
Is, is microphone on?
I can talk loud.
I know. I feel like I'm loud, I have mental voice going. So, we would have to, well, first of all, there are an abundance of classrooms on the first floor, way more than our preschool could fill up in probably multiple years to come. And then I think we would have to look at the needs of the preschool, and what additional things would have to go in there to make it accessible for that. Again, this idea literally just came to us this morning, so this is kind of all, I don't know, a little serendipitous considering the board meeting was tonight, to present it to you, but we'd have to look at what they needed. I don't know, Dan, if you can see.
Would you like me to hold the mic for you?
I mean, you might, he, he might have some better ideas. You can take your mic, and last time if you want.
So, the question is, would the, the task will be accessible for the preschool, correct?
Yeah.
So, yes, it would be, there's a number of classrooms, way more than we have at the existing preschool right now. We'd do some small modifications, like some additional sinks and classrooms and things like that, but overall, it's accessible, and it would only be the first floor for the preschool.
Accessible to get to the gym?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. And I think one of the things we could think about, as we talk about these ideas, is not just the preschool, you know, if we, if we use the third floor just purely for, you know, close it off, or storage, or whatever, record keeping, you know, that would leave the second floor as well. So, as we talk about, as our needs change of kids, and a lot of the things that we've seen this year through the remote learning process, you know, we're, we're having a digital academy next year, eventually we'd like to see an alternative school for kids that want something different. So, I think there are other viable options that could be utilized as well. The preschool was just one that we had talked about, as we continue to watch our numbers grow, and the space over the ELC is fairly limited.
And it could have a multipurpose, too, right?
Absolutely.
It wouldn't just?
That's what I guess I meant. It wouldn't have to be just preschool, we could look at multiple classes of use for our kids in this community.
Okay.
Because I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a great place for, I know the dedicated remote learners this year had, we had to rent a church for them to take their map tests. That could be, if we do the digital academy, that could, I'm assuming they'll still have to do map testing, so they could come in, and, I mean, that would be a use, I'm just...
Yeah, I think there's lots of possibilities that we probably even haven't thought of ourselves, just given the quick turnaround time of the conversation and this discussion right here. Those are just a few of the ones that we thought of over the top of our heads.
Yeah, that's always kind of been in the back of my mind, I guess, all along, is to keep it somewhat in that respect, and then build a new building somewhere. That's always what I've thought all along, but I'm glad you came up with that, Casey and Rick, so, I think that's.
We just heard from Garland.
I, I think it's definitely worth looking into, and I think we should move forward in that direction.
And this would, this could be something, again, that we would be doing without having to ask taxpayers for any additional funding.
Eric, Eric Bolson was on air, and then Wayne Coleman and Kurt South saw the call with Casey this morning. The key is, if, you know, we're, this is what we're talking about, we still need to remove Patasko from the master plan, and we still need to ask them to add a new elementary. The previous resolution was to basically abandon that. We're not going to abandon that, we're going to pull it out. If we don't have to follow the design manual, the renovations are going to be a lot cheaper.
Okay.
So, he said by pulling it out, using our own funds to renovate Patasko, it will be cheaper on us to do that than trying to follow the design.
Okay.
You know, we told Kurt South, you gotta keep going with that Patasko, because there's no other direction than renovating. Our thought was, we talked about today just briefly, it was, if we went this way, we'd want to stop on Patasko and move to design a new building. Basically, the task would be at last minute, so. So, we'd go ahead and design the new one, build it, renovate Kirkersville, and then we would look at renovating, because Patasko would be empty, so, because the kids have ruined the building anyway. So, that building would be empty, so we can renovate, but we still also, tomorrow's the middle school, if we want to put the new building where the middle school is, or that property, we have that option. But then, once it's done, because Casey time figured out the best use for that building.
So, I'm sorry.
No, you're.
I confused by the timeline. If we were to explore this new option further, the students that were, are supposed to be at Patasko Elementary, the K-three kids, if we chose, let's say, to put it on the middle school grounds, where would those kids go to school while it was being built? They would stay at Patasko?
They would stay at that, it's like, we still stay at that.
I see, okay, I, I just, thank you, sorry. Now I feel dumb.
No, no, it's a good question. This is common, this just came through, we had a takeoff meeting, it was on eleven, this idea came at ten forty-five, or something like that.
But that wouldn't affect the middle school swing space piece, right?
I don't think, we still would need room for Kirkersville, I think, we still need for those kids, and those kids probably still need to go to middle school, we have to think this all out.
Okay.
But I think those kids would still need to go to middle school, which is why Kirkersville's getting renovated.
Okay.
And then, basically, once it's done, the new fourth, the new building will be built, and Kirkersville renovation, you know, new building takes a long, you know, so it may be six months after Kirkersville renovation is done, so kids can go back to Kirkersville and the new building. But if we do that, then we've got to figure out, you know, basically, probably can't put it on the middle school site if we need the swing space, unless we push the two kids into, all the kids into the new fourth, new elementary in Edna. If we did that, then we could put it on the four or five, I mean, we haven't got real need of that, so, that's really two options. If we use middle school swing space, then we have to put it on our property back here.
Right.
If we can add, if we put the kids in Edna, you know, this, and then somehow, we have to talk about all, then we can potentially put it on middle school site. That may be a lot tougher, trying to get all those kids, and maybe more into building for most. But really, the task is going to be at the very end. So, yes, that basically, it might be okay, might have to figure out, we might get both, basically Kirkersville and Edna kids in the same building.
Yeah, I think, I think first would be to figure out the location, and then we would figure out where the kids are going, so.
Yeah, just getting, getting, basically, part for the horse, but, you know, that's kind of the concept, I mean, this is a very new concept, so basically, Kurt South is still continuing working on the renovation of that, until the board votes on that. So, unless, use votes tonight and tell them stop. Because, because the timeline, he's got to keep moving, we're already, we're reconciling SD, we just finished reconciling SD for that.
So, we need a motion, if we're going to?
So, I mean, that's, that'll be a way to go there. The idea would be, basically, if this, you really like this idea, that basically, you know, we start moving forward with it. If we don't move forward, then we got to continue with the renovation of that.
Okay, I have another question.
Without pushing back. So, really, what the motion needs to be is what was there in prior meetings, is basically, is ask the, ask OFCC to pull Patasko out of the master plan, and to add a new K-three elementary to the master plan. But we're not going to, or, I guess, and four, was to abandon, we're not going to abandon, or, or is going to be, we're going to renovate that building for a smaller capacity, for a potential multi-use facility. That, I mean, all they need to be, a resolution tonight is basically, pull out Patasko, add K-three, a new K-three to the master plan, and that gets us started. If that happens, Kurt South will stop with Patasko, and they will jump on the new elementary.
And do we still have the, do we still have the issue where OFCC has to go through two separate boards, and they only meet every other month, so it's going to push it probably a good six months at this point?
Yeah, but he can keep, they can keep working on, it's a designed new building.
Okay.
So, that, if they know that's a direction, we don't know why OFCC would not approve it if it doesn't involve them having any money. If we were asking for more money for that, I would say, no, it's not going to happen. Hopefully, they'll approve it knowing they're not getting more money in that building. We are making a difference.
I'm mostly saying that out loud for everyone.
No, that's good, that's good, that's a good question.
And we can finance this to be a decent school, not a bare bones elementary, it will be.
We want another school that looks like this, Elmen.
Or smaller. Be smaller.
Smaller, smaller.
This was twenty-three man, and what, they want the board to ask for, we talked about was twenty-three man, so, from high school facilities, and then bar twelve.
Okay.
But a lot of that was in land, again, if you put it back here, then you've got to look at the, because there's going to be a lot of land.
Yeah.
But, yes, it would be, I would assume, very similar to this building, maybe.
That's what I was saying, like, you know, this building, we wanted a wooden floor on the gym, but an elementary gym doesn't necessarily need the expense of the wood floor.
It could be the rug, yes, so.
So.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion with what Rip just said. Does that make sense? Can you make that into a motion, Rip, that?
So, basically, the motion tonight would be to ask the high school facilities to remove Patasko Elementary from the master plan, and to add a new K-three elementary to it.
Yes, that's what I'd like to move.
That's the move motion, is basically, it's the board's word that we're not going to demo that, so, we're going to renovate.
Correct.
Into a smaller building.
Yeah. Can I still ask questions, even though there's a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, once we get a second, yeah, one second, still a second.
Once there's a second, because I have a couple more questions myself.
Second.
All right.
Oh.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So, you just said that the twenty-three man would be our piece from the state, plus what the local share was, for the new building?
Yes.
Where, just repeat it for me again, where is the renovation of the Patasko for the new use coming from?
There's still, we did high, we did PI, there was still money left there.
Okay.
So, there's, we can issue more than twelve man. And there's also, we also get revenue from things we have talked about, this is called RANs, revenue anticipation bonds, or notes. You know, we get a half man, the most a million dollars in Amazon, we can issue against that. And then we have COs coming in, but issue against that, if that solar field goes out, that's four, forty-five thousand a year, issue against, to help. So, I think we have, I truly believe we have the ability to revenue, to use these revenue sources that basically are not part of the general fund. To renovate Patasko Elementary.
Okay, I just wanted to get it clear in my head, where the money was going, coming from, for that piece, that renovation piece, if it was not coming from the part that was the bond?
And this is way, board votes this, and I will set work with our mission, right? It'll get a strong plan together, and give you, so you know where exactly the finances are coming from.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
We just haven't, again, just today, and.
I got you.
I didn't want to spend the time until we know, whether the board felt.
Um, would we, with the project then becoming, being a new build, would we still fall under the OFCC, we can only build to a certain student level, or can we expand that? Because we know our population's expanding.
The issue is, I don't know if we can, we, I'm talking about this, if we have the money to expand it bigger and still renovate that.
Okay.
You know, there is a finite amount of money, I think we probably got a little bit over the twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, around there. But that extra money, to me, needs to go towards the renovation task.
Okay.
I mean, ideally, if it was a bond issue?
But we could.
A bigger building, or, and maybe we can figure out a way, similar to what we did with high schools, find areas.
That's what I was going to ask.
That are oversized, like the cafeteria, to allow us to put additional, if you can.
Right. Could we, yeah. If we could just get the structure, yeah.
Force phase, can we be oversizing the force phase?
Force phase to allow us to put additional, yes.
And allow it to be structured, so that if we needed to extend a hallway, we could.
Yes, and we know.
Oh, you're done.
I have one more question, and then I'll be, um, is it premature to have this discussion about possibly looking at land that is available in other parts of the school district? Because right now, all schools but one are in Edna Township. Harrison's a huge part of this district, and there are no schools in Harrison Township.
Well, I know that Harrison said that we, we have one builder who has reserved land for the district, but they haven't developed their property yet, and they have no, no idea of when they're going to develop their property.
Okay.
So, we have one situation where we'd have an additional building in Harrison, based on the agreement that they have with this property.
Currently, there are two schools outside of Edna. Patasko is still, right now.
In Patasko, right.
And Kirkersville is, yeah.
There was a contract, a few, quite a few years back, it said we'll give us twenty acres on sixteen, but basically swapped them.
Okay.
You know, they couldn't go on.
I mean, I just don't know if it hurts to see what's out there. I mean, and I'm speaking for me, I don't know if the rest of the board, the rest of the board might want a school where the middle school is. I'm just speaking for.
Well, I, I think in the motion, that we don't, we haven't decided land, right? We're just deciding we're going to build a K through three, and I think that's an option. And I agree with you, John, there are some developments out there on sixteen that I know have offered land in the past, and whether it's still there or not, but that would be, to me, ideal for Harrison Township to have a school in that area of it.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's worth looking into.
Could you guys reach out to them?
Yeah, we, we'll look into it, it depends on it.
I just want to add to the conversation, just something to consider, as we, as we look at all these developments coming in, and as eventually tonight, I'll talk about the, the boundaries, I mean, we, I understand, and I get where you're coming from and what you're saying, but I will tell you, the growth, the, the hundreds of kids that are coming, hundreds, 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 they're coming, they're coming west, they're coming to Edna, the other side of Patasko, I mean, there's very, very, very little growth. So, in my mind, I'm thinking, bus routes, you know, that's some of the largest complaints we have now, how long our kids are on the buses for, just some logistics that we're not thinking. I, I think it's, as Roger's saying, no, nothing's decided right in this moment anyways of the school placement, but I think we should look at the future developments and growth when we have that conversation, if we're looking at if something else is available, or where, you know, the board would like to put the school. I just think we need to be mindful of everything coming our way, because it's coming.
Yeah. Tsunami's near.
Yeah, it's coming.
That was kind of what my comment was going to be around that, is this whole conversation with, if we were to go this route, it doesn't necessarily preclude us from having to go back for, for K-three building at some point.
That's a good point, I didn't even think about that, that's a good point.
Short-term down the road, it's not going to create a solution to every problem with the growth in enrollment.
No, and in the coming months, we're going to have a presentation to the board, we're working, Rick and I, with that company, to look at all of our developments and farmland and potential growth, and we'll be presenting, or they'll be presenting to you what it looks like and what we're talking about, and that's going to give us a, an idea how to create a master plan of when we will need it, and then, you know, back our ears up for when we need to start going back to the voters. So, it's, it's, it's not, it's not if, it's when.
Right, and that's why I'm thinking that if we are trying to be fiscally responsible, maybe we don't look at land now if we're going to eventually, I mean, but that's not, that's aside from what's on the table at the moment, so.
Okay.
I don't know, that's just my thoughts.
This goes through, that could be a discussion in the next couple of months, because eventually they go figure out the layout.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to see what Harrison has to off, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Just see what's available.
Well, and my thought, where it's, the school is, wherever it's going to be cheaper for it to be.
Yeah, it has to be within.
If it's going to be cheaper to put it on where the middle school is, then put it there, or if it's going to be cheaper to put it behind here, then put it, because that makes, does it?
To me, the cheapest spot is going to be, the drives are already there, parking lots are already there, buses are there.
I think we should put it to wherever it's going to be cheaper to put it, so we can get more money into the building.
Both buildings.
And we already have money plugged into, abate the middle school anyway, right?
Yeah, the bait and dimples are included in the high school.
Okay.
This is my apple cider, but.
All right, so.
Actually, middle school renovation is done, but, yeah, that's, that's going to definitely be far cheaper than, you know, put 2, 3 million dollars, possibly some way.
Even the dirt is hard, expensive, right?
But we can still look and see what's.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank you ladies for coming in tonight and forcing your opinion. That's what we need more of. And you're right, I've always, in my 27 years on the board, I've always said, what's best for kids? Now, you still have to take the rest of the big picture and put it all together and decide what's best for kids, but I appreciate you all coming in tonight, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion. Everyone understands what the motion is, right? Ready to vote?
Yep, Rick made it.
All right, Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zining?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, that motion passes. We will move on to agenda item number five, which is approval of minutes from January 13th. We have the organizational meeting and the regular meeting, so we can do them separately or together, it's up to you all.
I move approval five A and B.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Can't even hear her.
Any discussion?
Couldn't hear me, not really.
Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Zining?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, that motion passes as well, we'll move on to six A. Need a motion to accept report from the treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
On the agenda is the executive summit for July 31st, 2021. Fairly routine month, our third income tax summit came in, it came in quite a higher than we expected, and actually, year-to-date, we're about 6% over where we anticipated, if you remember, the forecast. We actually reduced it by 5% this year because of COVID. Now, we actually picked that up, now we're 1% plus over the current 8%. If that continues, that's definitely a good, a good thing. The other big thing in revenue is, we got a pretty large refund from the BWC, about $256,000, equals about three or four years premium, it's more than that package. So that, we got, partly what's a general fund, some food service, it's all split in by payroll, but that will definitely help the general fund as well. Expenditures are pretty well wide on target, and year-to-date revenue is 3% higher than we expected, and year-to-date expenditures are 3% below where we expected. So we are about $1.5 million headed where we just made it this time, so we're doing very well.
All going in the right direction, so.
Yes, but it keeps going that way.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zining?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, that passes, we will move on to the personnel consent calendar, we can take them separately or we can do all of them. I think you're separate.
Yep, yep. So I'm motion to approve seven, eight through I.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zining?
Yes. That passes. We'll move on to eight, A and B, personnel consent calendar.
I move approval AA and B.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Upstate.
Mr. Zining?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, that passes, we'll move on to business item number nine, job descriptions and salary schedules. Need a motion to approve, motion of approval, so we can discuss those.
Motion to approve nine A.
Second.
So these are our two job descriptions that we've spoken about at previous board meetings, the new family-first coordinator job that will be paid for out of our wellness funds, which we're happy to report, we're going to, they just, the state renewed those, so we are going to have wellness funds for plenty of time to come for that position. So that is positive news for the district, and then the BCBA job description as well. So both of those are on there with their salary schedules. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zining?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, that passes, we will move on to treasure items. Ten A, ten B, separate or together, it's up to you all.
Motion to approve ten A and B.
Second.
Any discussion, other than we'd like to thank everyone for the donations they make? They are appreciated and the district thanks you.
Some better announced difficult, again, timing of this.
Right. Okay. Questions, Mr. Jones, please call the roll.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zining?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, that passes, and believe it or not, we're down to number 11, this has maybe been the quickest meeting I've ever been a part of. So these, we don't really need motions for, but you have the floor, Dr. Perkins.
So I wanted to update everyone on our super fun year of calamity days. So we have had eight total, but obviously, we don't go, you know, by days anymore, it's by hours, and so I've tried to communicate, because I think it's a confusing thing to, to parents and our families, when you're trying to explain, why do I have to do work? Why don't I have to do work? You know, so I've, I've tried to give a couple pieces of communication with that, but we're at a point now where it's, it's being broke down by grade bands. You know, we heard the parents and the strain, especially on the younger ones, and some of that work they're doing, because we know that falls on the parents to help the little kids, as opposed to our high school students. So currently, which I hope we have no more snow days, but our, our kindergarteners have, have two free days in essence, if you're counting by hours left, for no extra work, and they could have calamity time. Our first, second, and third graders have three, and the difference is because of the kindergarten screening day. Our fourth and fifth are obviously out of days, I said that, so any time that we have, including today, they have to do work. Six through eight have three days, and then the high school never had a single day because of the move and the late start and all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of, of where we're at, if we unfortunately have any more bad weather, hopefully we don't. So just to kind of give you an idea.
Now, if there is a two-hour delay, does that count against the time too, or not really?
Well, not really.
Okay.
Where we have, we have some hour wiggle room, we just don't have.
Days.
Even the high school has .66, so.
Okay.
We have a little bit, and I think we've only had one delay and it turned into a closing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have some, we do have wiggle room with that if we had to. So that's just that kind of update, do you guys have any questions on that, or? Nope, okay. And then, our enrollment increased, so I haven't given that to you in a couple months, just to give you an idea, if you're just looking at from the July until present, we're up 147 students. So I, I do, I do think these numbers are, I think it's going to be interesting, if everything goes back to normal next year, hope everything goes back to normal, what our enrollment looks like, because I do think we've lost a lot of kids to, you know, homeschool and other factors because of the pandemic this year. So, you know, keeping track of it, but it'll be interesting to see what transpires in the coming months as enrollment starts increasing.
That seventh grade is huge.
Yeah, we have some really large grades. Yes, yeah, some big ones. And then lastly, I wanted to share about our redistricting. So initially, we had put a timeline together of March, spring break, to share with our